Good morning, welcome to the January 8th meeting of the Hatfield Board of Selectmen at Town Hall. We have a heavy agenda. Adam, we are going to be going into recess at about quarter to 10:00. We are all attending the funeral mass of Trooper Charles Yegoginski. So, we will not return until we're looking at Friday. And that will be televised also. So, just to have a moment of silence for Charlie. I've known him for quite a few years and he was quite a comedian and I know he's going to be sadly missed in town. So, let's just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, he'll be missed, so let's get on with business. Is anybody here for community forum? Would like to speak very quickly?
Yes.
Mike?
Very quickly, yeah. Mike Cahill, 31 North Street. The reason I'm here this morning, and it's hard to follow a moment of silence for Charlie Yegoginski, it's well deserved for sure. He will be missed. As you, as the board knows, we produce a community TV show, public TV show called Hatfield Currents. And one of the topics that I have been thinking about as a, for a future show, is the fiscal situation of the community. Within the last several weeks, most of us have received our actual 2013 tax bills. And I'm sure everyone has received a tax bill and has looked at it and compared it to last year. They've seen and discovered a whopping 13 percent increase in their property tax bills this year. And that, I think, deserves some explanation on the part of the, on the part of the leadership of the, of the community to the taxpayers in the community. You know, this is in a year where we're not seeing any new schools, we're not seeing a new library, we're not seeing a new water line. The impact of that water line won't be felt until next year, next fiscal year. We're really not seeing any new services at all. And we're seeing probably the single largest tax increase the community has enjoyed, if you will, pardon the pun, but over the last 25 years. So, I think that that kind of increase does deserve some explanation. And I also know that, that the community is about ready to go into fiscal '14 budgeting and planning. And I think that, you know, the taxpayers in the community would also like to hear what's kind of in store for fiscal '14 and beyond, quite frankly. So, what I would like to do this morning is to announce to the community that Hatfield Currents will be doing that show. I'm not exactly sure when. We're going to try to put this together. And for any community member that wants to participate in that discussion, feel free to email HatfieldCurrents@HatfieldCurrents@gmail.com. Feel free to call me at (247) 5110 and we'll see if you can put together and add you to the, to the discussion group. The discussion, the discussion group, I'm hoping, will consist of one of the members of the Board of Selectmen, Jan. I'm not sure whether, you know, you'd be able to do this, but I, you know, would invite you at this point to, to join in on this, on this show. And other members of the Hatfield, so-called Hatfield Fiscal-Financial Team. I'd like to perhaps get somebody from the Finance Committee, someone from the Assessors, a couple of other people, maybe someone from the School Department. But to kind of talk about this year, next year, and what's ahead financially for the community. So, again, I, you know, if someone's interested in joining in, that's watching, feel free to email me or the show@HatfieldCurrents@gmail.com. Call me. And I'm hoping to try to put this together sometime within the next, within the next several weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
And I will contact you.
Will you be willing to join in? All right. Thanks, Jan.
All right. We're going to-
I have something else for the community forum. We've got a couple of residents here from the Circle Drive and Plain Road area. I have a petition here with 35 signatures on it. It says, "We the undersigned hereby petition the town of Hatfield for the following: to reinstall a street light at the intersection of Circle Drive and Plain Road and have power restored to it. Because of increased traffic and in the ongoing problem with trailer trucks trying to find CNS distributors, we feel that this is a dangerous intersection and that this action needs consideration." So, I think we can, you know, discuss this later, but I wanted to present that this morning.
We can definitely look into, we are, by the way, looking at several things that we're going to be doing over there. One of the other things too is, which I will get into at our, probably Friday's meeting, we'll come back to this. We're going to have a short first part of our meeting today and then if you could attend Friday, we'd appreciate it.
Friday?
Yep.
So, we more had this-
Uh, no, not today, I'm sorry.
Okay. Could I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Not pertaining to Plain Road, but there, Phil, there's a tree not too far from 34 Plain Road. And it's, it's a tall, tall tree and one of the limbs is pretty big and thick and it's leaning toward the road. And I'm not sure if it's, if we get a good windstorm, that could come off because it doesn't look like it's healthy. It looks like it's rotten partly.
Any wires involved?
Pardon?
Is there any wires involved there?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. No.
Okay. We'll take okay.
Okay. We can go then. We have to come back Friday.
I'll do anything. No. Not, not just the, just the street light on that corner because it's so dangerous. In fact, those trailer trucks, one was overturned down by the bridge.
All right. We'll discuss it Friday.
At 9:00?
Yeah. We'll come in here at 9:00.
Okay. Thank you.
It's currently posted for 11:00. That's when we're meeting with-
Is it?
Yeah.
All right. Well, it's going to be 11:00, but we're meeting with-
Senator Kocot.
Senator Kocot.
Representative Kocot.
A representative Kocot and possibly Senator Rosenberg.
I mean, we can meet earlier, you know.
They're reconvening, so we can meet earlier.
Yeah.
All right. So, why don't we, 9:00. All right?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Next, nobody else here for community forum? All right. We will get into the Hatfield Housing Authority appointment. And I know I have it here. We do have a-
Let them do their vote.
Appointment. Do you have, Stanley, could you come up here and just, John, one of you?
Jan, Paul's going to have to post the meeting for Friday because we can't reconvene until the next day. We can't reconvene anymore.
I bet you couldn't.
We can do it in the same day.
Well, he's posted for Friday. He's just changing the time.
Yeah. And that meeting's already posted.
Yes, sir.
Michael McGrath, Chair of the Hatfield Housing Authority. We're here in, for Donna Paddock to replace one of our-
Janet Blais.
Janet Blais that has given her notice. So, we're here in support. Hopefully you can appoint her and we'll, we can have a full board again.
All right.
Have them do their vote.
Do you want to, did you already vote or?
Yes. You have voted?
You have voted?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you have it in your minutes and everything like that?
I'd move that Ms. Donna L. Paddock be appointed to the Housing Authority, replacing, in the position, taken position of Ms. Blais, with a term expiring in May 2013.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All set. Thank you. All right. Let's go back to, we can wait out on-
Town Hall.
Town Hall. Then we'll go to the Town Hall Building Committee and the Architects' Report.
We have Kevin Shea from Architecture EL here.
Kevin, if you want.
Morning, Joe. With a minute.
Morning.
State my name or place for record or anything?
Please, yes.
Okay. Kevin Shea, Architecture EL, East Loma, Massachusetts. Basically, well, I'm not sure how we want to format this. If I could recap in general the steps that we've taken to date. We've basically gathered a group of mechanical and electrical engineers and site designers, evaluated the existing building, the site, toured it, measured it, inventoried the existing conditions. We've gone over program needs with Paul, had a couple interim department meetings to review progress and design options and impact. And from that, we've developed two or three, well, minimum three, design alternates which include accessibility improvements to the Town Hall, elevator access, offices, accessible bathrooms, and some site improvements. Of those three options, we've zeroed in on one primary plan that looks to be the most efficient, easiest in terms of compliance, with the best impact and use to the site and building. From that, we've broken it further and subs, further subdivided potential pricing by category. And if I could say, along with the scope of work are a whole handful of code triggers that come out of the existing and state building codes that require upgrades to fire alarm, emergency exit lighting, accessibility throughout the building, as well as possible fire protection or fire sprinkler upgrades. All these have varying triggers depending on the type and scope amount and value of work that is selected at this juncture. So, it's kind of a sliding scale. The more we do, the more we have to do. If we entertain a minimal scope of work, that may avoid some, some code requirements such as, such as a fire sprinkler upgrades. Of course, we have to be mindful of the long-term plans. Accessibility upgrades carry a three-year window where they monitor permits over three years and accumulate those costs and values which then back us into required compliance measures.
Three years or five years?
Three on accessibility, five on sprinklers. So, we want to be mindful of what we ask for, what we adopt now, short to long-term, so that we don't, you know, obviously cost ourselves more in the long run. So, we want to carefully manage short to long-term costs and implementation of the work. The original work that was advertised was budgeted about $400,000 for the design services. Soon as we got into it, we quickly realized some of the key components quickly pushed that, the work beyond the possible budget scenario. For instance, elevator also requires upgrade on electric service, which is a significant piece of the project. Generally speaking, the, to break things down, the site and the elevator, if we were to achieve compliance with accessibility from the site into the building and then connecting all three floors within the building, that early budget comes in around $522,000 and change, or $523,000. First floor bathrooms, that comes in around $80,000. Offices on the first floor, $116,000, $117,000. Fire sprinklers are potentially over $300,000. That includes the water entrance, the street, the site repairs, building, cut and paste and finish, painting exposed pipes, and distributing the pipe all the way up from the bottom to the attic. If we were to take all these in inclusion, we're over approximately $1,031,000 and change. And I think Paul has the full report, obviously with some of the final dollars and cents. There are some prime considerations that we can't forget and those are some of the soft costs. There's still some outstanding recommendations for environmental testing and analysis. We're most likely going to be in some level of abatement. The, that inventory testing and specification work is not defined or contracted and that could have a significant impact to the budget as well. And these numbers are not including contingencies, which we need to be mindful.
Tell me that one.
You know, then there's, you know, some owner's costs, printing, site survey. All of these are triggered, as I said, in sliding scale. If we don't do any site work, we don't need to engage site surveys now. We just stay within a modest scope. One of the items that Paul has, and I have discussed, is really focusing the work on the bathrooms and the offices. And that comes in at just under $200,000, plus contingencies and abatement and testing. That does not trigger necessarily full compliance with accessibility throughout the building, but it does require accessible bathrooms, which fortunately are part of the work, and an accessible entry. We have ramp access to first floor and lower level in place, as we all know. It's in fair to poor condition. And technically speaking, if it's required to be compliant, accessibility, it actually does not meet all compliance measures dimensionally. It's too narrow. The length and the run may be a little off pitch. Is there opportunity, ask for variance to accept the ramp as is because it is close to compliant? Yes, there's an opportunity there, but then we're spending time and money seeking approval on a ramp that's less than ideal and probably nearing the end of its useful or recommended life. We understand that the primary needs within the building are for the offices and the bathrooms, defining a useful copy server area with proper ventilation and control. And that that modest work at $200,000, round numbers, makes some sense in terms of initiating and completing work in the immediate future. My recommendations are, rely with the infrastructure investment. Paul, I go back and forth on this. We understand your program needs. That gets bathrooms and it meets the needs of people within the building. The infrastructure and getting people in, the site improvements and the elevator, that pave the way for all other future potential program needs and renovations and improvements within the building. Whether it's uses for the upper second floor, whether, you know, we've got some preliminary talks with Historical Society or Historical Commission. And just every time we do something, we're going to continue to back up into some of these potential code triggers and eventually face incorporating the ramp or the elevator into one project or another. So, Janet, in summary, that's a little bit of what we've been doing the last month or two. We're really at a turning point now. We need to define a scope of work so that we can keep the project moving or, or define if we need to go out and ask for additional funds, modify funding, so that then we can redefine the scope of work and keep things moving on that front. That's a little bit of where we are right now. Sound for good time, Paul?
This, well, I mean, as you heard-
Sorry, that's a lot.
As you heard Mr. Cahill up here about two minutes ago saying, you know, the taxes have gone up, so at the $200,000, I mean, we definitely need the offices. We voted this at our last meeting and we received, I forgot how much exactly it was, but I think we can handle some of this, you know, without getting into the elevators and redoing the upper floors and, I mean, that's my feeling about it. But I did, when, when we came up to hiring you, I said, "This is it. The final, the final time we get somebody in here to design something. At least off of this design, we can build out. If it takes 10 years, we can do it." You know?
No, no. My job is not to come here to spend more money. My job is to-
No, I understand that.
Define the work and report back.
Right. I just want townspeople to know how I feel about it anyways.
Surely.
You know, because, again, yes, the taxes are going, you know, and there's people that can't, are looking at their tax bills, like Mike said, and probably crying today.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
Bottom line is getting a design on paper to, to scale and knowing what we want, where we want it, and then do it whenever we get the money to do it. All right? I mean, there's no way we're going to come up with that much money. So, even the offices upstairs, I mean, maybe take a look at it and see exactly how we're doing it.
Okay.
All right? I mean, you guys have one idea, but there's a lot of other options and ideas.
No, it's, it's understood. I mean, the office needs are pretty modest. The bathroom needs are pretty efficient in terms of getting accessible bathrooms, a respectable and secure server and data management space.
Do we need two bathrooms upstairs or one? One, I believe, because we have two down here.
You have-
Three down here.
If you have bathrooms that meet the quantity, you may be able to get by with one unisex. But in a public Town Hall setting, if you're going at the expense to build one and you're losing a whole office to build one and you can fit two in that same space, it does seem feasible or appropriate that you provide one for men and women, especially in a public Town Hall setting on that first floor, which is really the primary business floor. So, you know, this is where we try to balance what is the, the right and appropriate fit and expense and investment for the use versus the bare minimum to code. Sometimes when you go through all the steps, all the overhead, all the time invested to save just a little bit, which was then, it's one of those, you say, you may save, you know, 10 percent and give up 50 percent the use, or 20 percent savings in your use is 50 percent reduced. It's not an equitable savings to use scale, so we want to bear that in mind.
What's the committee's recommendation?
In terms of-
In terms of what are they recommending as a way ahead?
Well, we have not, we have not, we've discussed it, but I don't think, you know, we have not come to consensus. There's still some things that, you know, we need to mull over. I mean, one of the big questions hanging out there right now is the, is the issue with the sprinklers. A flow test is being scheduled to see what kind of volume and pressure we have. I, I think we already know that there isn't enough pressure and that would require a pump system, which is costed in at about $75,000. We don't really know about volume. If we don't have enough volume, then the sprinkler issue goes away. Because, you know, without, without the volume, without the pressure, you know, the, it's, it's not going to work. So, that's a big question right now.
That's being scheduled now.
What's the cutoff point for the sprinkler system?
Well, in terms of the pressure or in terms of the-
In terms of installing it in this building?
Well, it's, it's measured in two or three different factors. There's a Mass General Law that we refer to that actually is more stringent than the building code. And the Mass General Law goes all the way down to 33 percent of the building area and, and/or 33 percent of the assessed value of the building. The building assessed about $1 million and change, limits the work to 300. And those numbers are closely parallel to the accessibility numbers. Accessibility uses a 30 percent and $100,000 trigger. So, we're close to that. And they also have further definitions and/or exemptions, one of which is adequate water supply and pressure, one of which also goes back to a definition of what is construed as major alterations. It's, it's a tedious piece of the law to work through in terms of what, what is major and they, they attempt to give us direction on that. And the, one of the last factors is, is the cost of sprinkler disproportionately expensive relative to the work that we're doing. You know, if we're spending $1 million, clearly $100,000 investment would not be out of the realm of doable. We're spending 200 and sprinklers are 100, then that's obviously disproportionately on us. So, those are all of the factors that go in and that's why I first started with keeping an eye on the five-year window.
Yeah.
Because that's the measure. Because with the scope, we will likely trigger it eventually. It's whether we start to trigger it now or two years or five years down the road.
Well, we're not going to trigger it now. We know that.
If we do just the modest work at 200, no. If we look to further the studies with Historical Museum up on the second floor, there may be a change of use issue there, which may trigger accessibility issues, which then trigger site, which start to push the scope, which then pushes us ever closer to the sprinkler issue. It's all, it's a snowball effect.
I know.
So, we need to be, we're working very careful to keep the scope modest and appropriate. There are arguments that can be made that as we're doing this, life safety is being increased, fire alarm is being upgraded, emergency exit lighting is being upgraded.
We just put a new fire alarm system in here.
Understood. It's being upgraded where the new work happens.
Okay.
And/or there's a couple of minor adjustments that have to happen.
Okay.
You know, as you do the elevator, as each one of these things triggers, there's fire alarm work that goes with it.
At what point do we get a, a design that's usable in bidding? At what point will that happen?
Well, that's, right now, we are holding, trying to obtain final direction in terms of what it is we're, we're designing and what our final scope will include.
Well, I thought, I was under the assumption you're designing everything that our needs are and then we can take and pick and choose, like if we only want to do the offices, we do the offices. The other is designed for next year or the year after. We don't want to get into designing this thing every time and have a consultant come in and spend another $30,000 every damn year that we're going to do this. That ain't going to happen.
I, I understand that. At the same time, you have to be careful in taking apart work over time because every time you forestall a piece of work, then whoever the design professional is, whether it's me or the next guy or the next guy, they have to take it, they have to own the liability, they have to go back to check with current code and make adjustments and then re-own the work. So, each time you try to break it down, you're going to potentially own an overlapping of services and/or an increased cost factor, if you will.
But to update a plan from your company is a lot cheaper than having another contractor come in and do it.
That's-
I mean, you can update a plan for probably $5,000.
Well, it's conjecture.
Yeah, whatever. Okay.
My, my goal is to respond to your needs and design efficiently to your needs. I don't know that it makes, you know, we have a schematic plan that could be implemented advanced at any point. I don't know that it makes sense to do full construction drawings on something that's never going to happen, versus, whereas we can draw and bid something that you can build now, rather than spend money on something that's just going to sit on the shelf for years of time and then once you pull it out, there's, there's that restart, that factor that you, you know, whether you have to go back out to public, you know, bid designer selection process, all of that keeps happening over and over.
Now, your fee included the design drawings. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, there's some scope and, scope and budget references and limitations. So, it's, everything is a function of what the, what the current scope and value of the work is. There's, there's, there's still like the, there's still site surveys that are needed if we implement the full work. Okay? There's still environmental studies that are needed. And there's probably going to be an adjustment factor on fee and scope based on the work as it grows.
Environmental studies, you're talking about air quality?
No, like-
Materials.
Materials, whether it's lead or asbestos or what have you.
Okay. All right.
So, you know, there's, there's a number of factors involved in there. I don't want to draw something that's not going to get used.
Okay. But to get to Ed's point, we're not going to have, you're saying, we're not going to have a plan that addresses all planned improvements. For example, what we're talking about, we're not, is not, we will not have a plan for the museum on the second floor, which we've voted to approve. We will not have a plan to remove the stage. We will not have a plan for the fire suppression. We will not have a plan here that incorporates the CPA money for the front entrance. We will not have a plan for the, for the elevator. Again, we got some CPA money there. We're not costed here as well, our plan for the sampling. And again, we're not accosted for any modified design.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, are you, do you want, do you want me to design a million dollars worth of work that you might build or do you want me to design a couple hundred that we are going to build?
We want to, we want to design what we have to build in this Town Hall. If it means putting a suspension system in, that's what it means. And we design it and get it. If we're not going to do it, it'll be done within the next X amount of years. But right now, we can't do it this year. We know that. But we want to be able to, we want to have that option of it being drawn. We don't, we don't want to go and spend another $30,000 in three years just to do another design work on this whole building. It's just not, I mean, we got a hundred, over $100,000 into it right now in just design work and we have nothing. All right? That frustrates me big time.
That's not, that's not your issue. It's ours.
Right. I understand this history, which is, which is why I hesitate actually to draw and specify a complete- a complete set of drawings, you know, piece of a project that is, that is not defined in the future. We know we can do it, we've drawn it to a schematic level.
Yeah.
We've actually done a lot of work chasing, you know, really pursuing design options and budgeting and budgeting breakdown, you know, pretty far down the road here. I think your most efficient use is to get us to draw what you can build.
Okay.
I mean, it's, if you want to, that's fine, but I think it's going to-
I just want everyone to understand what we're, what we're getting.
Right.
John, you're on the committee, right?
I'm one of the three members on-
Could you come up here and just, just so? This is John Wilkes, he's one of the building committee members.
Well, we're not, we're asked to select a design. There was numerous designers and architects who submitted applications for, you know, this project, and we selected, you know, unanimously selected the E.L. in the end, after reviewing, you know, all the applications and interviewing all the architects, the finals for this project. The problem that the committee had, you know, making a recommendation, we can't hit a moving target in a sense that we don't know what the board of selectmen's frame of mind is and what they want to get built, okay, in the final analysis of it. I think E.L. did a, they've offered three alternative selections to us, and based upon the work they've done, and it's, what I think the committee, design committee, would need, you know, to make a selection, would kind of read your minds, what do you want done first? Do you want the offices? Do you want the elevator? Do you want the bathroom? Also, Mike and I sit on this community preservation committee. We have a vested interest in, we've already appropriated, you know, almost a couple hundred thousand for this project, okay? If you're eliminating the elevator, then I wouldn't think you'd be using the elevator money to fund these other, you know, office part of it for, you know, the cost that has to be done. Also, when we were going over this initial, and I think you did a good job, and also Paul did a lot of homework on it, I think sprinkler system, this is the only building in town, public building in town that's not sprinkled. Well, maybe the town barn isn't, but, you know, schools are sprinkled, you know, any pending new construction probably would be sprinkled if you had going ahead with a new library and stuff like that. But I was surprised that, you know, this building, if you're going to do any major renovations, you should sprinkler it. As a public, see, we have a public safety issue, you know, sprinkling it, but also, Paul, we're also a green committee, and I've learned a lot on this committee, in fact, in regard to the town hall here. It's costing us five times more to heat this town hall than it is the new elementary school. And we're not making any provisions in this, to replace the boilers for oil to gas or something, you know, that was, and they came up with an estimate probably $97,000 or something, probably. You know, those are alternatives. That's not in the scope, you know, Eddie, you keep saying, "I need a design, I need a design." Well, you got to, if you're going to need a design, you got to narrow in and decide what you want to do with the money you got to build with now. If not, go forward for some additional money. Two years ago or a year ago, we voted down a $5 million renovation project. For, I think the estimates that E.L. came up with, maybe for a million one total, which we already have 400 or 500,000 in hand, we could probably sprinkle the system and put in the boilers along with whatever you want to do. You know, somebody's going to make a decision where we go from here, and I guess it's on your three shoulders. You know, the committee can make some recommendations, but you got to, you got to decide where do you want to go right from here. We're at a crossroads in, you know, in regard to the design. The design, you know, they seem, they'll be able to design anything we want based upon what do we want. And we haven't definitively made that answer yet as a community.
John, the frustrating part here is that every time that we go to do anything in this town hall and we hire a new architect, everybody wants to draw their own building, their own dimension, their own little thing to do the whole building, and then if we do one little piece, it costs us $30,000 every time we do that. So if the renovation work that we want to do is $60,000 or $100,000, we got to pay another $30,000 just to have a company come in unless we hired the previous company. So we're trying to get rid of that, okay? We want, we want to be able to go in and just work on it and do the project.
I understand, and I think the committee understands it. Just the other two members that were on this, you know, design committee were Bob Bartley, who was, you know, contractor and assistant, your assistant building inspector, and Ron Ponsko, who's, you know, assessing. Ronnie's very conservative, you know, in regard to the assessment. He's really concerned about the costs, you know, going up on a project like this, you know? So we have, and that's, the mix of the team we had with Paul can say, we've had, we've had some discussions on it, and there's been conflict within the committee. I would see a little bit more, like to see a little bit more going at this point in time. I would like to see the elevator get put in. I would like to see that handicap ramp fixed, all right? We found out through our discussions, if we fix that handicap, we don't have to use all the money we did for the front of the building. We don't have to make that handicap accessible, correct? I believe.
You have to get a waiver.
Right, we can do a waiver, but because we'll have a better understanding by building a better ramp for everybody to access, you know? And then the elevator, you know, we appropriate money for the elevator, some of it, it's not enough to build it, but you got to decide. We're at a crossroads, and it's tough with a situation like it is with the taxes. Everybody's, you know, was an eye-opener, so. That's all I can offer.
You know, the sad part is, I don't think anybody knows what they want. I'll be hon, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. $5 million to complete a building, I mean, we could go and buy some land and put a one level, one floor building in for $5 million, which would be a hell of a lot better than having to maintain an elevator every year, have to get it certified every year by law, put in sprinkler systems, three floors, four floors. Come on, let's be realistic. Let's be realistic. What do we want? I mean, and it is up to this board. What the hell do we want? Excuse me, but I do get worried.
We need officers, Jan, we need officers.
I know.
We've previously been through what we wanted, we've defined what we wanted, we've voted on what we wanted.
But-
Now we look at the price and-
Right, but I'm just saying, okay, let's go with the three offices, if that's what we need, and then let's look towards the future. I think that's what we really have to do, and I'm serious. I mean, I think a lot of the problem is people don't want to see this building torn down. I don't know what to say, you know? Again, that would be something to bring to town floor. We kind of put it upon ourselves to bring this stuff up, or what is the best, or maybe a lot of this could be answered on town floor.
Right.
You know? I mean, we appropriate, we got money appropriated for the elevator, we did for the offices, all right? But that's about it. We didn't get anything appropriated for a new heating system. We got windows only because we had grant money for the windows, but other than that, what really have we gotten?
Well, we haven't got the windows in the gym either.
If I may, if I may, you know, I think the architect has come up with a very good plan. It's a modest plan, but we don't have enough money. I mean, I think we need to do, you know, we need to put in the elevator, we need to put in the offices, we need to put in the bathrooms. We need to do that. We don't have enough money to do that.
So we create an article for town meeting?
We create an article for town meeting. If town meeting votes it down, well, there it is, then we know, then we know what our, that our scope is limited.
And also, you know, we did throw it around, and if they want to, if you're going to do a sprinkler system and if you're going to do the boilers, those should be separate articles up or down. Simple as that.
Unless it impacts the design.
Well, that's simple as that. You know, you're going to have to do some thinking here, how you want to arrange your articles and what you want to address. You need some consulting work with Paul and the architect, how it would impact, you know, the fiscal, public safety of this building when you do this, these constructions. It's not going to cost you $5 million, but it's going to cost you a million maybe, but you do have some money in hand. So, but again, when your taxes go up, they were saying 13%, you know, I don't know if it's 13% for everybody, but it is, it will have an impact, you know, and, but you do get to spread it over 20 years. Say 600, 700,000 over 20 years. It means a lot, you know, it's a lot of money to a lot of people.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would also add that if it's the board's wish to bring this to town meeting, we can't wait till May, we have to have a special town meeting. We can't, we can't, we can't be sitting in limbo for the next five months, because that's exactly, that's where we'll be. Nothing will happen until we know where we are with the money issue.
All right, well, I think, can we simply build up the offices without impacting any code issues and simply carve that out and do that by the way?
The only contingency there is either, really lies in gaining either acceptance or a positive interpretation from the Mass Architectural Access Board-
About the fire suppression.
About the ramp condition.
On the ramp.
Whether it's compliant or whether they would force us to make a modification or corrective measures to it to get closer to compliance. And we're talking inches here.
Yeah.
I would hope that those inches are close enough to compliant. Generally, they're probably, they're very positive or receptive when you come to them with a plan.
So one strategy might be to press on with the, simply the offices, get the clearance on the-
On the ramp and access.
On the ramp. Meanwhile, structure an article for town meeting that addresses some of the things we, the smart things for the longer term, because we are going to be here, we're probably not going to move.
Oh, I realize that. I realize that. I just, this is my opinion, I'm sorry.
Well, I've said this a hundred times, I've been in this business for too long. In 75 years, you tear down a damn building, a public building, or you rehab it. I mean, it's just standard.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, we're rehabbing it in pieces.
I know, I know.
But if that's the way it's going to be, that's why, anyways, we are kind of running out of time.
Instead of spending more time in this, let's have a, let's put an agenda, we'll meet next week and deal with just this issue.
Okay.
I moved table to Friday.
I move we table it.
Till Friday, all right. Did you make that?
Not till Friday, it could be next week, we've got too much stuff going on this Friday.
Just let me know when you're meeting and we'll all-
All right. At any time, I do appreciate, I do appreciate all your help.
Right.
Working with Paul and-
But also, I just want to re, Bob will be back, he's on vacation in Florida, Bob Bartlett. If you're going to have a meeting, you know, I have no objection to a meeting, but it would be good to have the other two, you know, the chairman of the assessors and, you know, he's part of this, you know, design committee. It sounded like we're getting to be a building committee, but, you know, it's, you know, we'd be happy to help out any way we can, you know? Something's got to be resolved and, you know, go from there. But you, I think Paul had the right idea, you got to do it sooner than later. And then, again, it's be up to town, up or down.
We'll schedule a meeting next week.
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. See if we can adjourn.
I move to recess until Friday at 9:00.
I'll second that, but I don't think we, well, it's not a recess, but a-
Well.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bring the same package with us.